Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next are the minutes. Does anyone have any corrections, additions, or additions?
No.
Motion to approve.
Approved.
Second. Okay, they've been approved. The date of the next meeting? September 11th.
If we call it.
Noon o'clock. Correspondence?
None.
9:11 at noon.
None, not that I have.
Okay, then straight to the directors for reporting.
So July was fun. It was very busy, which we're happy to be able to say. Program attendance is really good, as you can see down there. The thing that I'm really excited about is just with having our Murderous Mondays Book Club. We've actually had the most adult programs offered in one year in the history of this library, just from having that once a month. And it's picking up, obviously, as that program continues. It's not on here yet, but we've also officially captured one of the other book clubs that has been meeting here on the, I think it's the third Friday of the month, which is run mostly by people in the community who are part of the Friends group, but also, you know, random other people as well. But I kind of had this epiphany because I was looking at the Friends newsletter, and that book club bills itself as the Westport Free Public Library Book Club. And I was like, you know what? If that refers to themselves as the Westport Free Public Library Book Club, and it's mostly made up of folks from our Friends group, and it's advertised by the Friends group in their newsletter as a library event, we ought to count it, too. And they've agreed, so now we are going to be including, starting this month, that, as well as another adult program. So really excited about that. To tip our hand for next month's report, if you look on here, where it says Facebook followers at 786, when I saw that number, I pulled Amy aside and I gave her a challenge, which she always rises to, which we're very proud of. But I flat-out said, I want 800 by next month, and she already hit it. So she was two weeks ahead of time.
She's young, right?
Yes.
She knows where to find everybody.
There's no way for me to, like, pull all of it into one number, because it might be the same people across platforms. So I could do one number with all the followers across all three platforms, but it might be an inflated number, because it could be the same people across all three. So, but if you wanted.
It would look really good.
It would. So if you want me to do that, that's something I could do, as opposed to just having the one number.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, you would have each number separately, no? Sorry. Like Facebook?
You want to have all three? Okay.
Facebook X?
Yeah.
TikTok Y, and what's the third platform?
Instagram.
Instagram.
Sure. Yeah, we could do that.
Because there may be an age disparity between the Facebook followers.
That's part of the reason that we're doing all three, because we're trying to hit the different audiences on the different platforms. But yeah, I'll see if we can set that up on here. Circulation. July 2023 is the highest single-month circulation we have on record, which we're very excited about. It works out to 6,969 physical items and 2,209 digital items, which give us that combined 9,178 total checkouts, which is really cool. If we keep around that number, which I don't expect us to, the summer is always our busiest months, but we'll see. I want to try and break 100,000 this year, which you have to keep above 8,200 per month to pull it off. We'll see. Meeting room uses, 34, not our highest, but still pretty busy. Obviously, in July and August and September, we do lose some meeting room uses because of the book sales. It would be higher otherwise. And 68 new patrons registered, which brings our total current registered patrons to 4,910, which is, we're making progress. It's been a long slog trying to make back some of the ones that were deleted. Last year, I think it was before you came on, Paulie, we had a change in how the local network counts registrations. In the past, if you had an overdue fine on your library account, which we'll see when we look at the big statistic backward look I did, basically, if you had a fine on your card even of one penny, your account would stay in the computer forever. Otherwise, if you didn't use your card after, like, three or five years, your account would be deleted out of the computer. But if you had a fine, you'd stay in there forever. So this last year, they changed it so that after seven years, it still will get deleted out. So there was a big drop in the registered patrons we had, because it went from, you know, keeping you in there if you had a fine forever, to only the seven years, which we're still trying to build back from that. But it's also a more accurate number, because that, you know, shows how many more current active users we still have.
Which is better info, right?
It is, and that's the thing. So in terms of the kids' programming, I'll let Bonnie talk about most of that, but I was very happy with the numbers. Adult programming was going well. The concert we had over at the Town Hall Annex went fun.
It was fun.
It was great. My watch actually gave me an alert, because it said I spent an hour on an elliptical.
Oh, wow, you were really dancing.
Being of Portuguese ethnic heritage, I was trying to show all the Yankees how to dance to the Portuguese music. Not enough tips. You got to work on that.
That's so true.
It was a good time. But if anybody's seen, there is actually video of Denise McHale, the treasurer and former president of the Friends, who volunteered to go up to the stage and actually participate as a backup dancer to Candida Rose.
Which must have felt like forever for her. She did a great job.
It was a long song.
It was, and she was super good and a good sport.
But somebody did take video, so if anybody hunts her down, she'll show it to you. But it was a great time.
Is that on YouTube?
I don't know. I don't know. It might be. So in terms of the staff, nothing new to report, which itself is something to report, is we're starting to stabilize. Everyone's selling into their new roles after a very hectic six months stabilizing and performing with impressive professionalism, if I do say so myself. We already talked about the circulation. Last month might have been the highest door count we've ever had. Technically, we're 15 short of the actual record, which was last September. But the big problem we have with last September and with this past July is that I have to guesstimate the door count down because of everyone in the lobby for the book sale. So people are going back and forth, looking at the stuff that's on sale, and it trips the door sensor. So I'm rounding down and trying to guesstimate what the door count actually is, because basically, for those two or three months, the count gets skewed because of the activity in the lobby. So it might have been more, it might have been less, but we're around the record, give or take. Also, in July, we finished re-weeding our nonfiction collection, which was starting to fill up again. So our general total, we try to aim to have about six to eight inches, or what I refer to as two of my hand spans, of free space on the shelves at any given time. We also received a very large donation of DVDs and Blu-rays that Amy's been working on adding to the collection, which required us to go through and get rid of some of the older DVDs that haven't been checked out in three to five years to free up space. Once it's all set and cataloged, the Blu-ray collection we have here is actually going to be doubling in size. And although some people have been giving up on DVDs and moving to streaming, we do have a bunch of folks who still use DVDs and Blu-rays, so that's good. And just a small update, in FY '23, which is from July to June, our hotspots were checked out a total of 43 times, with an additional nine checkouts just this past July, which is technically FY '24. So they still do get heavier use during the summer, but folks have been using them more during the rest of the year as well. For comparison, in FY '22, which was the first year that we had them, which, at that time, they were funded with federal money, so they were open to be checked out by any people, not just Westport residents, but Fall River people or Dartmouth people coming over, they were only checked out 29 times that year. And obviously, the current ones are restricted to just Westport residents.
Can I ask a probably stupid question?
Yes, ma'am.
How do you check out a hotspot?
So basically, we have a barcode on the hotspot, and we scan it, and it gets checked out to your library card for a week. Then you go, you use it, and, Lord willing, you bring it back.
Ah, okay.
So it's pretty cool.
All right. Huh, interesting.
Haven't had any problems with them. We had one that was a little bit overdue, but we called them and they brought it right back, so that's been good.
Huh, interesting.
And then in terms of the buildings and grounds, as you can see, we had the landscape mulched and we did, and cleaned up. We did choose the metal quote last year, last month, from the JS Landscaping, who gave us a discount. We had a gentleman here literally worked a whole week on the whole project, so he was a really good guy. Some of the work on the south side was made a little difficult, because he actually found that we had a wasp nest up in the siding of the building, so there's still a little bit of weeds poking through down there. That's because he was not able to get to some of it because of the pests, but the mulch did still get spread, so we called out these pest control to spray. Unfortunately, the soonest they could get here was actually after his last day of work, but it has been taken care of, so the wasps are gone.
However, they removed all of our ground cover out front. We had ground cover, perennial ground cover, in between the bushes in the front gardens, and they pulled all that out as if they were weeds.
That wasn't the way they were.
They, they were ground cover. And the other thing, they've mulched everything right up against the trees, and that's not a good thing?
Yeah, we already had one go out and fix that.
Oh, you did, okay, because that would kill the trees.
That's my report.
But it looks so much better.
Oh, yeah.
My up? Okay. Summer wrap-up is this week, basically. The storytimes, both storytimes were really well-attended this summer, which has been a lot of fun. I think my largest one was the toddler group, I had 25 people in one group, so it's been a lot of kids back in the kids' section all summer, which has been really fun. The afternoon movie, it started to pick up steam. It depended on the weather. Rainy days, I obviously got more people, but I think it was fun, and the people who did come enjoyed it. I didn't have much luck with the evening bedtime storytime. I only ended up doing it one time, and I had two families show up. So I might try again, maybe once a month, and see what happens. I want to do something in the evening, but I think maybe I need to rethink what we actually do. About, I think about 30 kids got the bingo sheets and 18 brought them back, but the ones who did bring them back, almost all of them came back multiple times. I did give out about 75 prizes, so. There were 40 entries in the Possum Pets photo contest, and we've already had over 200 votes, and there's two weeks left in it, so that's been super fun. I can't wait to do that again next year, I really liked that. And I'm doing, on September 14th, I'm going to Wellesley Public Library to do a Mother Goose on the Loose training workshop, which is the curriculum that I've been using for the toddler group that we do. And the, the actual woman who wrote the entire curriculum is doing the training there, so I'm really excited about that, because I've been sort of winging it. George taught me a bunch when I first got here, and I have the book that I had bought, but, so this should be really helpful. And I, I don't have it on here, but I'm working on the Halloween program, so we're planning on a Touch a Truck Halloween-themed event, and possibly painting pumpkins. So I've talked to the fire department already, and I think I have a tentative date for that, but I think that's it.
Why do you talk to the fire department?
So they can bring their trucks.
Oh. That makes sense.
A lot of the kids get to come out, outreach day for the fire department, so they'll talk about what they do, fire safety with the kids.
That's fun.
Kids get to actually see a fire truck, and they just go crazy for it, so it's a great event.
They sit in the truck, they take their pictures.
Yeah, it's fun.
And they blow the horns inside.
Don't they also get the plastic cats?
Yes. They do.
And we're going to have candy for Halloween, and they can wear their costumes and kind of trick-or-treat at the trucks.
What are you doing differently that you're getting the people coming into the movies during the day? Because last summer, it didn't go well.
Yeah. I've just been mentioning it a lot more to everybody who comes in, and I always remind them at storytime. It was mostly the same people who came to my Tuesday morning storytime would come back after lunch for the movies, so that helps a lot.
Last year, we had.
Last year, it didn't work out very well.
Last year, we had more technical issues, because we were still trying to get it all working and set up. So we had, last year, we offered it three times, and then the fourth week is when people started showing up, but at that time, we were so busy with everything else that we just pulled the cord, and we just canceled the rest of them because of the lack of attendance, and just with everything else we had going on. But this year, the technology is more straightened out, we have everything, all the bugs are shot, troubleshooting, not to mix my metaphors. It's been going better.
I guess I'm the next one. Friends update?
Yes. Go for it.
Oh, sure. Friends, the fall meeting, the board meeting, and they were talking about the past events that are upcoming events that they sponsor, Richard's Potter lecture, the Luther Day, the Candida Rose, and they were doing a lot of logistics about the paperback book sale, and they're all, like, I think there's 14 people on the board, I'm not sure, 12 or 14.
Some of them 14 or 15.
Yeah, but they're really, really, and they're generous, funny, and motivated, so it's a great group. We couldn't do a library what we do without them, and they are very aware of that. They were talking about trying to increase their membership, which is something we'll be working on, because there's only about 200 members of the Friends, and some are very generous, some are basic level. So the idea is to spread it out more and get more public support, which would increase awareness in the town of our activities and our budget needs.
Which was interesting, because one of the things I told the Friends is they actually have about the same membership as the Friends group in Wareham does, with obviously, that's about, you know, I think it's 8,000 or 9,000 people, 700 or 8,000 people more in Wareham than there is here. So it's a, it's a good membership level in terms of active members, but, you know, the more, the better.
And they, they also mentioned the aging of the volunteers, of the people who've been doing it for years and years and years, are moving newer, younger people will step up and carry it forward. I mean, there's no problem, it won't fall apart, but it's always good to have fresh membership, fresh ideas for programming. We'll see what happens. There's a meeting August 31st that we'll be going to. It was fun.
And then the next book sale will be, the member's preview is August 8th, with the full sale starting on the 9th, I believe.
September.
Yeah, September, yeah, till before our next meeting. So that'll be fun.
Yeah. Okay, trustee subcommittee updates, safety, I see, has been postponed, and then long-range planning.
So the survey has been completed, we wound up having 120, 23 or 28 surveys turned back in, so we're happy with that. And then we just had the community forum this past Saturday, which thank you for those of you who attended. Christie was very happy with the crowd, and she'll be getting us the summary reflection of the event sometime this week before she goes on vacation, which we will use to pool all of that together to work on the long-range plan, which hopefully Bonnie and I and the committee will be able to hash out and get before you guys either next month or the month after, depending on how it all goes.
She was a great facilitator.
Yeah, she's really cool.
She is good. Now, do we get a copy of the results?
It's going to be included in the appendix of the long-range plan.
So we don't get to see it until then?
Well, not, if you want to, I can print it off for you, but it's like 30 pages, so I didn't want to run it off for everybody unless somebody wanted to look at it.
Oh, I thought it was, you don't have, I thought because it was on the computer that we would see the, you know, a printout of the results.
Results for the survey?
Of the survey or the meeting?
The survey.
The survey.
If you want to, I can send it to you, that's not a problem. It was just, it's 30 pages, so I, we presented it to the long-range planning committee, so I wasn't going to present the whole thing to the entire Board of Trustees.
Oh, okay, never mind.
But I can send it to you, Paulie, if you'd like to look at it, but it's not a problem. But yes, and then the next steps will be us working that all together, and then editing it, hashing it out, and then it'll be presented to the Board of Trustees for final approval and acceptance before going forward. Questions?
New business?
So part of the long-range plan, just wanted to present some ideas to everybody and see how, what the thoughts were on them are. But we have two ideas for tweaking some of the permanent furniture in the library, so I'd like to present it to the board for their opinions and comments before we, you know, do anything on it. If it's just regular furniture, if we change a chair or something like that, I don't really think the board needs to really care too much about, like, a chair, but something that's a permanent part of the library, I definitely want to, you know, show it to you all first before we move forward on it. But one idea is to put in a book drop at the front desk, so that people who are returning books don't just leave them on top of the counter, like, have an actual slot that they can go into and be held there until we, you know, check them back into the computer, just to keep things cleaner and eliminate an avenue of potential confusion, in case, you know, books getting returned and books getting checked out can get mixed together or missed. So just, it's one of those things that is something we'd like to address. I haven't settled on an exact spot yet. It's something that the desk was not designed to accommodate. I think the easiest place would be in the west side of the desk, where there's a wooden panel that would probably just pop through, they have a box right there to collect the book returns. The problem is that it kind of creates a bottleneck in which people would have to go around to get to the spot to return the books, and it's also where we have a lot of people go to that computer to check things in and check things out.
How about in the foyer?
There's not enough room easily between where we put the seed catalog, and when the Friends have their donation box, and when the two spinning carols are for the take-one-leave-one area and the bench. It's really, it's more cluttered than I like it the way that it is already. The other option is maybe putting it in the front of the desk, but that would require a little bit more engineering to figure out how to make that work. But that's something that I'm working on. The other option is maybe getting a freestanding book return somewhere in the main hall of the library, but then we're back into a square-footed situation of trying to find a good spot for it. So that's one thing. I'm hoping whenever we pull the trigger on it and move forward on it as a project, to have the Diamond Kids come out, because they do have a carpentry department that is looking for work, and the benches went so well, I'd like to keep working with them as much as we can. And plus, I like getting the kids in to see the library, that was a really good experience for them and for us. And then Project Two is an idea to, we're running out of space in the children's area, and the cost of replacing shelving being so high, there's not a lot we can do with the main shelving down there without, you know, a serious, serious cost. So one of the thoughts to free up space for shelving and for additional seating, which was one of the requests we had, is to shorten the children's desk, because right now, it's very large J shape. It was actually designed originally for having two staff people down there, and we've never had a second person in the last, you know, 14 years since, or 13 and change, from the expansion project. So it's a lot of desks, literally more desks than they actually need. So the idea would be to shorten that, and then maybe leave it the way that it is, or rotate it, depending on what works best, we're not sure yet. But this is two concepts, two things we're thinking about doing.
And that would give more space for seating or more space for shelving?
So the way that is designed back there is this long J shape with the children's librarian facing the meeting room, basically. So there's literally about 12 to 15 shelves of bookshelf that are behind where the desk is. Some of it is occupied by books that can be checked out, some of it is occupied by books that Bonnie uses for programming. And we've tried to create a boundary between the two, and we've actually created a little bit of a barricade to make sure, keep patrons from going behind the desk, because that was an issue we were having.
That was a problem. Probably.
It was. So try to control that space and really mark off what is staff space versus what is the public space. And it's tough, because, you know, we don't always have somebody at that desk, because, you know, if we're short staff, Bonnie will move up to the front, or if it's one of the days when she's off, we don't have somebody back that side of the library, just for staffing reasons. But yeah.
Good ideas.
So are you going to have the students come as soon as school opens?
Not yet, we're still trying to plan out exactly what to do and how to do it. And I know they have a waitlist of projects from last year they didn't get to yet, so I don't have an exact timeline yet, and we still are trying to figure out exactly what to do and where, but I just wanted to make sure I got it in front of you folks, that these are things we're thinking about doing, and then we're still working on the particulars.
That's great, because I, I know when I walk in with my little pile of books, I always get confused, like, we could hear to it, and there, so I'll go on to it.
Does the outside drop box get used often?
It does, and that's the thing, there were a lot of folks who got trained during COVID times. Back then, you had to return out there. But it's one of those things that just wasn't ever really planned for when the desk was designed and recreated during the construction project. And up until now, folks do just, you know, bring the books in, or they give them to a staff member, or they'll leave them on that south side or west side of the desk, which you can see, because all of the paint's worn off that desk from people just dropping books, books getting taken up, which is fine, it works well enough, but, you know, sometimes you do have books that might go into the wrong pile, you might check something out, and you think it's not, something might be going to another library and accidentally gets put back on the shelf. So just having something that more clearly delineates, these are books that are being brought back, and then store them there until they can be checked back in, just to keep the, what they call a work stream cleaner. So there's less opportunities for things to wind up in the wrong street, basically. I like my river analogies on Westport. And then with the kids' desk, it's just, you know, with that square footage being what it is, there's only so many things we can change without serious changes being necessary. The other thing, which I think Bonnie was the one who floated it, was the idea of maybe moving the teen shelves. There's one shelf that is on the floor, but we could move it so it's closer to the seating area of the main hall, so that would free up a little bit more square footage that way as well, and just maybe a little closer to where the long tables are. So you'd lose a little bit of footage on that side, but it's mostly just used for walking, so as long as there's enough space on the table, that could work, and that would get you some more foot space as well in the kids' section. But we could look at that.
Now, are you thinking of replacing the desk? I mean, with a, with a smaller desk?
The original idea was just to shorten the desk that's there.
Oh, you can do that?
Maybe. And that's the thing, it'll depend on, you know, what the carpentry staff and students think. We could maybe cut the desk and just take the end panel and slap her on there. It depends on how the desk was constructed. I haven't gotten under it to really look at how it was put together, but it's a potential. Obviously, the other, the easier thing would probably be just to chuck the whole desk and get a new, smaller one. A lot of libraries now, they're actually getting rid of a lot of specialized desks, and they're moving to more of a mobile floating librarian thing. I'm not there yet, but a lot of the times, what they'll do is they'll get kind of like a standing desk on wheels, so that way, when there's a librarian on duty and in that surface area, the desk can come out. If not, they can be put away, so it makes it more mobile and more modular. But we actually have Bonnie here, and there's enough.
Yeah, for the most part, I'm down there.
Work in the kids' area as much that I don't think something that that is variable like that is necessary. So my, personally, that is such a nice desk, I would rather keep it and try to modify it, because it is, you know, it's a gorgeous piece of furniture. But maybe rotate it so that it would be facing back towards the picture book area, as opposed to.
That would be more comfortable than staring at the wall. It's a little weird.
Well, originally, when it was laid out, it was designed so that the children's librarian could see people coming into and exiting the space, which I get that, so you wouldn't have people behind you necessarily. But it also was designed with the intention of having a second staff person there, so it's just, it's never really worked out that way. The way the desk was designed has never been how it was actually used.
So it's taking up space.
Literally, yeah. Which is good, because then Bonnie has more space to work on and to, you know, put together her crafts and things like that, so it's useful, but it's also, you know, a waste.
It's taking up a lot of floor space that.
It could use for other things. Especially now that, you know, as we're expanding the collection, there literally is only so much we can do with the shelving that we have. So it's, it's, it's getting crunched. And basically, right now, with the kids' collection, we only have three options. It's. It's thinning out the collection more, so we have more space for other stuff, which we're already really close to me feeling uncomfortable with how thin the collection is. It's going vertical, so making the shelves taller, which then, you know, our primary users down there are children. You know, we do not have a, we have collections that are designed for parents to read to children, but most of those books are for kids to read themselves. So if we go too much higher than they already are.
So they should be able to access them.
That's the thing. So, I mean, we can get stools, but, you know, as a parent, I don't trust them. And so then the only other option would be completely re-shelving, replacing the shelving with additional shelving that's a little bit higher, but has like an extra row. Which last time I priced that out, we're looking at anywhere from $25,000 to $40,000 because the shelving is not cheap. We're just finding other ways to free up space to have more shelving and more seating, which is why Bonnie came up with the idea of shortening the desk, which is a good option. And then whether or not we move the teen shelf over to create more space there as well. That's something we could do-ish.
Well, that sounds, that sounds like a real good idea.
It does, because they seem like they've kind of, they might not want to be in the children's area too as a teen. There's that fine line.
It's a reverse issue. So we have a, with the space that we have in the kids' section right now, the teens don't, are not allowed into the kids' section. And because of the limitations in seating area, most of the time the middle schoolers aren't allowed either. If they're above fifth grade, that's usually the cutoff we use. If you're fifth and up, you have to go and sit in the teen area or in some other part of the library, especially after school when those spaces all fill up. So we've had requests from parents as well as parents of middle schoolers for the middle schoolers to have more space in what we consider the kids' section. Whereas before, you usually have to go and sit in the tables area in the middle of the library typically. Or in one of the other places throughout the library. Because right now, the seating we have in the kids' section is pretty much in the picture book area, which is good for, you know.
For kids.
You know, pre-K through second or third or fourth grade. But once you get above fourth grade, there's not really, there's some benches and some like small, I guess you call them stools. But they're kind of like backlist chairs.
They're not very comfortable, they're not very inviting.
And that's the thing, so, and a lot of the places in parts of the library, we've been working the last, you know, five years towards having nicer sitting areas for people to come in and sit and read and spend time not only by themselves, but with others in the library, with their families, as opposed to just coming into the library, getting your books and getting out. So it's more of a fellowship area. And the kids' section being so tight as it is in floor space is one of the places where we've had the biggest struggle trying to make that work and balancing not completely gutting the collection as well to free up floor space just for seats. And that's the thing we've been working on the most last year, trying to do that down there. The Friends went a long way with that big donation they gave us last year to get new seating and some different equipment, which has helped. I mean, having that bench down there has been great. But that's for the littler kids, the more, you know, fourth grade and up, that's gonna be the next target for the next year of us trying to really kind of work to put our arms around trying to make that whole space better for them too.
We're welcoming.
Do you get many requests for holds on children's books as well as adult?
Some, yeah. It's, it's tough because we're still working and trying to update the kids' collection and that's where we're bumping into the space issue a lot. A lot of the books that kids want, you know, the paperbacks, the Goosebumps, the Magic Treehouse books, that's where we struggle to find space because most of the picture books we have fit on those two spinning shelves that we have back there and that's it. So we'd have to go and start throwing out more of the hardcover books to balance that out and put them back.
But they can request to get them on hold?
They can. The problem that we have here is it's a reverse problem. Without having the books on the shelves, we don't have a lot of kids finding them. They're not bumping into them in the school library. They're not, unless they come here from another library or they see somebody talking about it at school or online or something like that. There's a lot of books that we don't have in the collection that kids haven't been checking out because they don't know they're there. So it's more of a, what we call a discovery issue. We don't have a lot of kids' space on the shelves to find books you're not already looking for. So we have all the summer reading book lists from all the different classes that we've found. But unless somebody comes in and asks for a book and we know that we need it or if somebody's reading through a particular series and we get that whole series, we don't have a lot of space for books that are not established, that are not classics, that are not known authors. So that's the thing, kids aren't finding books they haven't read before or finding books that they didn't know to ask for because the collection back there is so tight.
Now, during the pandemic, when the kids were doing remote learning, a lot of their reading was on the computer. And stories would be read to them, but also authors were introduced to them. So they saw the author and talked with the author, so to speak. So they know who authors were and would then, if they saw a book by that, say, oh, I know that author. Which was interesting to me as a reading teacher because that never happened when I was teaching. And then, now Zachary's nine and he, he likes Raoul Dahl. Well, he doesn't read one, he's been reading all of them. And I just wondered, because I said to him, if there are any books that you can get them at the library, you can put them on hold, I was thinking you could.
Definitely. And some kids do do that. The last year and a half, our big push in the kids' collection has been focusing on establishing the kids' graphic novel collection, which has been going very well. I think we're usually averaging somewhere between 100 to 400 checkouts there per month. But the problem with the kids' graphic novels is then it's just a shelf space issue again because there's so many, right now they're the most popular form of literature for kids and for the teen collection as well. The teen graphic novel collection accounts for approximately half of the entire teen checkouts. There's just so many different series that we can't get them all. So then it is a matter of the kids coming in and asking and us ordering them and getting as much as we can on the shelf. With those collections, we try to have a smattering of a bunch of different stuff to whet kids' appetites and then we can order what we don't have room for ourselves. And that's been going well. But it's one of those things that we know, and then we've also had some parents ask us to do a lot of work enhancing the kids' nonfiction collection, which is gonna be one of our big focuses this coming year. Good questions. But yes, so those are the two things we're kind of kicking around right now in terms of the desks. But since the desks are such a big deal for the library, they're literally focal points. I wanted to make sure we got that in front of everybody in case anybody had any thoughts or comments about it before we went too much farther in the planning or conceptualizing process.
You'll draw some pictures.
If you want me to.
When you finally figure it out.
Yeah. Messing around with my sister's CAD software.
Okay, statistics.
So this is something that we can spend as much or as little time as everybody wants to spend on it. Couple months back, when the folks were working on the override question and a town resident asked me for some data on library usage. So I wanted to make sure everybody here got to see it too. What I sent to him was a little bit of a thinner version of this. But this is literally 20 years of usage data for the library going back to 2002 and also including this last year, which just ended. As I mentioned, our fiscal years run from July of the last year to June of this year. So we are now in the second month of FY '24 as far as the library is concerned, which gets a little weird for us because it's literally a different calendar than the rest of everybody has. But it is what it is. So the categories that I went back and did the numbers on was the town's approximate population. Some of those years got a little weird, but it's ballpark. Registered users, users is how many people have library cards and have their live, their default library set to Westport. So that number includes people from Fall River or Dartmouth or from other towns that work in Westport and have their home library set as Westport, not necessarily Westport residents. Circulation is the total checkout items, physical and digital, for the year. Annual visitors is the number of people that come through the door. As you can see, up until 2021, that number is zero because we didn't used to count that. Hours open to the public is literally how many hours the library was open and available to people to come in. Staff hours per week, non-custodial, is how many hours cumulative of all the staff added together working at the library without counting custodial or maintenance technician, which are usually considered not public facing. So that's why that number gets left out of the total. Reference questions were not considered, well, basically that was another one number that wasn't counted before we started working here. Programs offered, those are direct programs put on either by library staff or funded on behalf of the library by the Friends. And then meeting room usage is non-library. So that's other outside groups or parties using one of our meeting room spaces. So as you can see, now in 2022 and 2023 FY, we actually have the highest attendance, which as I said, is kind of cheating because we only started counting it when I started here. But the circulation is higher. As well as this is currently the highest number of hours open to the public and the highest number of staff hours made available to the public. It isn't the largest staff we've ever had. In the past, we did, used to have more people working here, but we have more hours being worked in total out of the number of people we have now versus in the past. We used to have some people who would only work two, three or four hours a week in some occasions. So less people working more hours, basically.
And that was necessary because people, we need to give people hours to keep them.
Well, back then, it was, people were used as substitute librarians. So there were people who were, you know, on call to fill in when there was a staff shortage. If somebody was on vacation or called out sick, they'd call somebody in on a fill-in status, basically. But yeah, as I mentioned in the, before the meeting started, one of the things I'm proudest of is we, this last year was our highest attendance of programs on record for the last 15 years since 2007, without also having the highest numbers of programs. So we have more people attending less programs, so we were very proud of that. The other big number, as I mentioned, that was a little bit different, is the registered users count. As you can see, we had a big drop from 2002 to 2023 because they changed how those numbers are kept so that after seven years, if your account is not used, even if you have an overdue fine, your account is deleted. So the 4,800 is a much realer number of current and active library users as opposed to if you look back to 2000, I think 2006, we had 9,700 registered users. Back then, once you had a library card, you had that library card for life. The account was never deleted, even if you hadn't used it in 40 years. So at that point, we started getting so many people between all of the different libraries that they started at the network level implementing rules to thin out that database if people didn't use their library cards after so often. Any questions about anything on there? No, everyone wants to go.
What was this data requested for?
There was a person who was working on the override and they were looking at how much town services were being used. So they asked to see some numbers about how much the library is being used now versus over the last 20 years.
For or against?
I wouldn't comment on that as a research topic.
Any old business? Other topics? Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.